When you say nation, you talk about land. Our land is African, that's undeniable. This land is not our land.
That what Franz Fanon's theory, psychological theory is that we're in a post colonial psychology. And what he calls that is an auto destructional stage, which is the oppressor will oppress for so long that the oppressed no longer have to be physically oppressed, they do it to themselves on the map. I'm black, do you hear me, man? Do you understand? I am black, I'm a nigga, you understand me? I was born black, I live black, and I'mma die probably because I'm black. Because some cracker that knows I'm black better than you nigga is probably gonna put a bullet in the back of my head.
Hey man, it's like this, man, it's like, you know, it's like it's revolution time, man. There's no questions to ask, revolution is here. You know what I'm saying? We the youth, we the young, it's time for us to break loose, you know? We don't have no freedom, no rights, man, we slaves right there, everybody's still a slave. That's what they told us today, in other words, you still a slave. No matter how much money you got, you still ain't shit, so you know, it's on, just like that.
Are really, really ready and willing to pay the price that is necessary for freedom. Our people will always be walking around here second class citizens or what you call 20th century slaves. What price are you talking about, sir? The price of freedom is death.
What's the figure?
I mean, what are you in this for? You wanna power, you wanna revenge, you know? What is it?
It's simple, buddy. I just wanna be free.
Hey, Ohuru Amani Naguva, I was so excited, man, by the intro. I forgot to jump on the screen. Hey, what's going on to everybody out there? Hey, hey, yeah, appreciate y'all tuning in as usual. Y'all know what we gonna do, we gonna get into this text, the blueprint for Black Power. This is another study session, number 25. We gonna keep on examining this work. And the intention is too, is like for us to like really put these ideas into practice. Dr. Emerson Wilson, you know, he didn't write this book only for us to have ideological discussions about what's being said in the book. He's actually laying out a blueprint for us to put into practice, to implement. So let's make sure that we're doing that. And I definitely wanna start having discussions with organizers, people who are out there doing the work. Because I'm in my travels and then discussions that I'm having, a lot of people don't know that the movement that took place in the 60s and the 70s is still alive, it's still kicking. Like people, it's black people who are still out here trying to advance black nationalism, trying to advance African internationalism, Pan-Africanism, trying to bring African people together to overthrow colonialism, to overthrow or dismantle the imperialist capitalist system. So I wanna have more discussions with organizers and people who are doing that work. So we can make people, our people more aware of what's out there, what exists, and what they can be a part of, right? And not just be spectators, and not just be criticizing what's not being done when they're not supporting the work that is being done in our communities. So with that being said, that was my intro, but I'm Ikemba Jodre, of We Charge Colonialism. We Charge Colonialism is a media outlet. And we have these discussions to combat the colonial propaganda, the colonial media that is put out there. Malcolm X, you listen to Malcolm X's last speech, he talks about how deceptive the media is and how they function to even function to even have African people work against their own interests, to work to actually support their own oppression and exploitation. So listen to that last speech. And actually, speaking of the last speech, this Black August, I spoke about it in our last podcast. Let me share my screen, share my screen. I want everybody to definitely be a part of our Black August discussion. We're gonna be looking at the, how come it's not up here? We're gonna be looking at Malcolm X's speeches. Hope you guys can see that. Black Power Hour coming this August, so this is how we're bringing in Black August. Two days a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, at 12:00 PM Eastern Time, we are going to be reading Malcolm X's speeches, examine it, and having discussions around it. So make sure that you subscribe, get notifications, so you can get notifications on when we're doing that. And this flyer will be in circulation on We Charge Colonialism Media. So make sure you're following this on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. And if you haven't subscribed to the channel, make sure you subscribe to the channel. So this is the Black Power Hour. Join us as we honor Black August with revolutionary readings of Brother Malcolm X. And so we're gonna be looking at the Oxford Debate, his last speech, message to the grassroots. There's a powerful article written by James Boggs that we're gonna examine. It's gonna be a great discussion, so make sure you bet your head for that. So with that being said, you know how we do, last time we left off in chapter two, bases of power, organization and ethnic resources. And I'm gonna pull it up on the screen. Yes, yes, like and share, like and share, family, they put that up there. Like and share, family, keep that up there while I get this. Hope everybody's having a revolutionary morning. And continue to have a revolutionary day. Make sure y'all brothers and sisters seize in time, as Bobby Sil used to say. Alright, so let's get into this. Alright, so I'mma pick up where I left off at, I'm on page 37. The last paragraph, and then I'mma go into this, to this quote right here. Alright, since social organizations may be conceived of as social power networks, the societies they may be said to constitute may in turn be perceived as consisting of multiple overlapping and intersecting social spatial networks of power. Conceiving, quote, conceiving of societies as multiple overlapping and intersecting power networks gives us the best available entry into the issue of what is ultimately primary or determining in societies. A general account of societies, their culture and their history can be best given in terms of the interrelations of what I will call the four sources of social power: ideological, economic, military, and political, i.e. EMP, relationships. These are, one, overlapping networks of social interaction, not dimensions, levels, or factors of a single social totality. This follows from my first statement, two, they are also organizations, institutional means of attaining human goals. Their promise comes not from the strength of human desires for ideological, economic, military, or political satisfaction, but from the particular organizational means each possesses to attain human goals, whatever these may be. And so just to briefly go back to what we were talking about last time in regards to social organization and power networks, just wanna briefly go back. So just to be clear, like social, you have social organizations, which is composed of two or more persons or groups of persons, each of whom operating under centralized human control or direction, plays a more or less specialized role, each behaving as a component part of the organized whole and whose active output is channeled and coordinated in some special way in order to perform work and achieve definite outcomes, right? And he goes down here, he talks about these different, these networks, institutions, or groups within the social organization representing a power network, right? So that's what that is. So I wanted to go back to that, just to bring it back to what I just read, when we're looking at social power being exercised ideologically, or economically, militarily, and politically, right? These are institutions that fall under, institutions under the social organization. So last time I talked about the state. And when I'm having, also when I'm, when I'm talking about the colonial institution, I also want us to think in terms of the type of institutions that we need to be building as well to be able to counter, counter the power that's used against us, that's practiced against us, right? So we have to be exercised, we have to create a social organization, and we have to create power networks, right? That, that's going to be overlapping, right? In order to achieve a particular goal, because even, and it's about achieving whatever our goal is. Our goal is liberation, we're not creating these institutions, institutions just for the sake of creating institutions, right? As he makes the point here, their promise comes not from the strength of human desires, right? Our desires to have these ideological, economic, or military, or political, you know, institutions, you know, just for the sake of having them. But it comes from a particular organizational means, the means that the institutions, each of them possess to be able to attain whatever our goals may be. Our goal should be revolution, our goal should be liberation as African people. When we understand the system, we have an analysis of the system, understand that it's in a colonial system, that we live under empire, and African people are being dominated by a foreign entity. Once we have that understanding, then we understand what type of institutions we need to build. Because most of the institutions that is being built, and I think that, we'll say he's gonna get into it, so I may be getting ahead of myself, right? But most of the institutions that we build are in service of white domination, white political economic domination. Like we serve the interests of the empire, right? And unless you organizing with some sort of black nationalist revolutionary organization that has a black agenda or African agenda, right? Which is to dismantle or separate ourselves, build alternatives to the system, then you're, you're only fueling the colonial system, you're only putting oil in the machine, right? So let me go on to the next paragraph. So he says, "The strength of power of organizations reflects their capacity to channelize and control people." Read that again, "The strength or power of organizations reflects their capacity to channelize and control people, to utilize their human and material resources, interests, and/or those of the larger society of which they are members or are parts." So the more power, it's proportional, the amount of power that an organization or group is able to exercise is gonna reflect proportionally the type of control that it has on a group of people. And the less power that organization has reflects the least amount of control, right? That it has on, or the lack of control that it has on a group of people. So when we see US, when we see European imperialism in crisis, we see a lack or inability of them to be able to exercise the same type of power that they had, right? When, when they directly ruled, right? African people on the continent, or under the system of slavery, we seen that there was less control, but then there had to be other institutions put in place, man. The European is very strategic, right? So just think about the movements, think about all of the social movements that we had as African people in the diaspora on the continent, where we were wrestling, attempting to wrestle control from the colonizer, right? The, the system was in crisis, and so the colonizer had to respond with different methods of control. This is why neo-colonialism is a problem, which, and Kruma talks about being the last stage of imperialism, right? Because now we have to deal with, we understood, we came to a level of consciousness and understanding of the capability or the power that African people had to liberate ourselves from colonialism. So what the imperialists had to do is now be able to divide African people by putting, propping up certain Africans and putting them in power, right? And now, because of this picture or image of black people in positions of power, relative power, now we think that, oh, okay, it isn't, the European isn't exploiting and oppressing us, it's black people who are exploiting and oppressing us, it's not a race thing, right? So you know, everybody has an equal opportunity, it's this illusion of now equality, equal opportunity, because we see black people in positions of power, right? And so this is why we talk about colonialism, so we don't delude ourselves to the oppression and exploitation that takes place, right? Yeah, it can be black people in positions of power, but who are they doing during the, doing the bidding of, right? And it's still the African working class that is suffering as a result of this, and result of the structure of the political economic system. So, but going back to this though, like the point I'm making here is just the, the ability of, or how the control of the European over African people, how the type of, the amount of control that they have is gonna reflect what you see African people doing to resist that control. When you see African people in the streets, right, and organizing for power, that's gonna begin to, the system is gonna be in crisis, and it's gonna begin to dismantle. This is why they need to control media and be get, control the media to be able to control the minds of African people, so that you can serve the function of the colony. So let me go, I'mma continue on, I spent a lot of time on two sentences, but I'mma go to this next, next. "Social organization as power networks." "Social organizations as power networks are structured forms of social control and simultaneously are the means of attaining social control. Social organizations as power networks are structured forms of social control and simultaneously are the means of attaining social control. The four sources of social power as designated by man, the ideological, economic, military, and political, offer alternative organizational means of social control. As the means of structurally transforming and enhancing human relations and capacity, social organizations of various types can often facilitate fundamental, fundamental social changes and radical changes in the social power relations, which hitherto characterize a particular society or social situation. Social organization amplifies power. It is a collective source of power in that it involves a means by which persons may enhance their joint power over third parties, or their environment by cooperating with each other. Collective power, that is the power of a group as a whole, may be maximized by its distributive power, that is by its internal organization and division of function or labor. The specialization of function at appropriate levels and the coordination of functions through supervision and under central direction. Collective power is enhanced and stabilized in a social group to the degree that its control is institutionally based on commonly accepted values, rules, laws, and norms. Cultures and societies normally achieve their routine goals through institutionalizing much of their social behavior and activities by founding and operating institutions designed to organize social attitudes and behavior toward the accomplishments of certain tasks." By fact, let me see, so, alright, because I never even checked my, I just wanted to make sure everyone could hear me. So, "Weekly organized groups, groups which lack collective organization or whose collective organizations are inadequate, are vulnerable to being, or in actuality organizationally outmaneuvered by more powerfully organized groups." I'mma finish this paragraph before I go. "The weaker group may be thereby forced to comply with the demands of the stronger due to the greater power and tactical advantages held by the latter group. Or the compliance of the weaker group is attained to having been forcibly integrated into inferior or subordinate positions within the confines of the collective and distributive social class of stratification, power organizations controlled by the stronger group." I don't, there's, there's a few ideas I wanna put out, put out here in regards to this. So, but first thing though, Dr. Emerson Wilson, again, he's like hammering on the point, I think he's making it a whole lot plainer than I am, in regards to just like weaker groups. I'm, I'm looking at it in a sense of, even those groups who are organized, the more organized you are, the greater the ability you have in exercising power over groups that are not organized. Or groups that are organized but are weakly organized, right? So, because there's, there's levels to it, you can have an organization, but if you're not strongly, if you're not, if your, if your structure is weak, if you're all not on the same page, if you're all not sharing the same values, norms, which he talks about here, and there's internal conflict, then it's easy for someone that, a group that's organized to be able to come and exercise control over you, they can maneuver you, they can cause division within your organization, right? And we see, we seen this, this is why the colonists were so effective in coming to Africa and coming to the Americas and being able to dispossess the people and colonize the people. And it's not, you know, it, it, it's not a fault of the African, the indigenous people, African people, just to be clear, because they didn't know what was coming, so let's just be clear on that. They didn't know that the European was coming and was gonna do exactly what they did. And when they did, which is annex their land and settle, settle and colonize the people and commit acts of genocide, they didn't know that that was coming. And when they did see it coming, there was attempts by African and indigenous people. If you look at their histories, Takumse, one of my favorite indigenous heroes, you know, Takumse, or Takumse. He was someone who attempted to organize the indigenous groups, all the different indigenous nations, ethnic groups, bring them together in order to fight against the British, to fight against the colonizers, the European. And he was successful at it to an extent, and he actually had victories. But because he wasn't able to get everybody on board, that weakened, that weakened their movement. And you see the same thing happen in Africa, where you have movements in Congo, where you see the strength of the Congolese with different ethnic groups coming together, because Patrice Lumumba was able to transcend ethnic lines, right? But what happened is you had this division where you had certain ethnic groups who were larger and more established, wanted to, wanted to exercise more power. The European played, played on these divisions, and they were able to exploit that. And this is why Kruma and Patrice Lumumba talks about the balkanization of Africa, and the, and the end result of that would be the colonization, the recolonization of African people. And so, you know, these things came to pass, but they were talking about this. If you listen to their speeches and you read about it, they warned us of these things at the time. So I know I'm saying a lot on this, but it really, this paragraph resonated with me. So again, I just wanna sort of just like double down on the importance of being, you know, not just in the organization, but making sure that you're sharing the same values, norms, and everybody's on the same page. Of course, there's gonna be disagreements, but you have to move in unison, you have to move in a public in unison. Malcolm talked about this as well in message to the grassroots. When he talked about, you know, if there's a disagreement, you don't go outside and air those grievances and disagreements with each other on the outside, because people will see that. Like, oh, they uncouth, they're savages, so there's this image of savagery and being uncouth. But also, more important is that the enemy will be able to see that division and will come in and try to exploit that, right? When they seen that Malcolm X was, there was a tension between Malcolm X and Nation of Islam, particularly the leadership, Elijah Muhammad, right? Malcolm was still in the Nation of Islam when the FBI came to Malcolm's home and, and talked to Malcolm and tried to get information from Malcolm about the Nation of Islam, because he was on suspension, and they felt like, oh, there's division there, let's try to exploit that, right? So again, like, I, I think this is really important. I, I'm not gonna spend any more time on this, I'mma go through a few more paragraphs. But I think like, in that paragraph, if you got the book, go back to it, because so many lessons to be learned right there. "So the ability of a social group to defend its independence or to be liberated from domination is related to its extensive power." I wanted, because it's important terms being used here, the ability of a social group to defend its independence, or to be liberated from domination, is related to its extensive power. That is, its ability to organize large numbers of people over far-flung territories in order to engage in minimally stable cooperation, right? So is, I mean, that's the very definition of imperialism, not saying that, you know, extensive power has to be exercised in a negative way though. You know, it can be exercised positively or negatively. Imperialism is a negative form of extensive power, right? And so when you look at imperialism, imperialism is the very definition of extensive power, the ability to be able to organize large numbers of people over far-flung territories. Was Britain able to organize a large number of people outside of Britain? Yeah, I mean, they had India colonized. You talking about million, hundreds of millions of people who are part of the British Empire. They had the United States, right? Before it was the United States at one time, was a colony of Britain, Australia, right? So we look at, and of course, like the different places in Africa, later on, you know, you have places like Kenya, Ghana, all of these people, that all these territories that will be part of the British Empire. So, you know, their ability, right, to be able to do that gave them the ability to acquire the resources, to build a military that can defend their independence, right? And they were an empire, so they had to liberate themselves from anything. But as African people who are looking to liberate ourselves, we have to be able to exercise extensive power. And being able to exercise extensive power means building a power network with African people all around the world, Jamaica, Haiti, Brazil, the 55 nations of Africa, Europe, wherever African people are, Asia, Australia, we're, we're all over the place, right? And to be able to organize non-African people, people, the, the, the people of Latin American indigenous people, being able to organize other oppressed people in the interest of African people, the liberation of African people, right? And of course, these groups of people probably, as they should, wanna know how is their supporting of African liberation gonna benefit them? Those are discussions that we need to have, because we don't, we can't think that other groups of people are gonna help African people for the sake of just helping them. But at the end of the day, we have to put African people first and seeing how can we organize other people for our own benefit and organize them against the interests of the European. And the interest of the European is to dominate African people and other oppressed people. So we have to be able to be, think strategically when it comes to that. So I spent a lot of time on extensive power. Alright, so I'mma go to this last paragraph, I wanna spend a lot of time on this. So, "Extensive power, that is the ability to organize large numbers of people over far-flung territories in order to engage in minimally stable cooperation. It's extensive, it's intensive power, its ability to organize tightly and command a high level of mobilization or commitment from the participants, whether the area and numbers covered are great or small." Alright, so now I'm gonna go to some of the examples that I didn't go to before. But just some ideas that I have, because this is right on time with intensive power, because I'm thinking about, of course, organization, but even community. Let's think about right where we live, the block that we're on. Our ability to be able to organize the very community that we live in, and the block that we live in, will give us the advantage over communities and groups that are not organized. So if, if you are able, if I am able to organize the block that I'm live, live on, and, and you, you know, respectively, on the blocks that y'all live on. And if you think about all of the other communities, all of the other community, blocks in your community organized, like think about the block associations, not saying that it doesn't exist, but we know in a lot of areas this, this doesn't exist, where you have block associations, people coming together, meeting in the interest of the Uh block associations, people coming together, meeting in the interest of the community members, the people that live on a particular block. We may have block captains just in name, right? And I can speak from um Philadelphia, my my uh experience in Philadelphia, a lot of these block, people of block captain is just a name. They come around and have a block party, you know, every so often, or uh try to um or if they're in um. Uh communication with the ward leaders or division leaders. There may be, you know, some uh communication between them when it comes around election time, getting people uh to go out and vote. Uh but that's about it, you know, but politics is beyond voting, so um but. You know, I think it's important to organize your neighbors. So even if you're not the block captain, there's things that you can do to bring people in, whether it's like doing something in the interest of the children on the block. Where you hold a a a block or town hall meeting or a block meeting, um talking about things that we can do. Hey, the summer is coming up. What can we do as a block for the children on this block? We got ten fifteen kids that live on this block. Uh can we pull our resources together and take these children on a trip to DC? The uh the African American Museum in DC, or take them to New York, the um. To a International African Arts Festival, which we just had in Brooklyn, right? Um these sort of things, and I'm, you know, as I'm speaking, I'm just saying to myself, it's something, I was at the festival, but I didn't even think of this at the time, right? But uh but there's other things that are coming up, so these are things that we can do. But going back to what what this does though, is it it you're organizing a block around particular issues, particular programs. Um and also now, as you're beginning to do work with block members, now you can up the ante and and hey, let's talk politics. Let's talk resources, right? How can we start to lobby for more resources for this community block? Were we doing these sort of things for the children or the block or the community members on the block? But now we need some of those resources, we need some of our tax dollars to go to what we're doing on this block, right? Now, if you, if you you're talking about uh uh, let's just say thirty families on a block. Thirty households or f- thirty or forty households on a block. No telling how many voters, right? Somewhere, let's say fifty to a hundred voters on a block. You think that if you go to your uh house representative, state representative. With forty voters who who saying this is what we want, what you're gonna do, um. They're not going to cave in to what you're saying, like how many other blocks are going to them and doing the same thing? Uh so, that's not that, I just wanted to throw some, you know, ideas. You guys probably could think of some other things. I'm just like freestyling right now. Um but these are things that I'm going right down after I do this, uh have this discussion. Cause these are things that should be implemented. We have to be organized. And so, again, like that puts you at an advantage over other, o- over other blocks. So even that block that's highly organized, you can go to the next block and say, this is what we're doing on our block. And this is what we've been able to attain or achieve by organizing on our block and things we've been able to do for our children. You know, maybe you on this block can do the same thing, right? And now you have one block, one block becomes two blocks, right? So, you know, we have to be very serious about organizing, very serious about um um power and control. Uh but back to, you know, the point of intensive um intensive uh power, this is a way to exercise intensive power. There, but there has to be some structure to it as well, values, norms, shared beliefs, you know, goals. Everybody doesn't have to be Christian, but everybody can have the goal of of wanting to make sure that our children receive a a proper education. Right? Making sure the schools aren't under uh underfunded. Um uh making sure that, you know, the our children and even us have the resources. Um that we need to survive within this colonial environment until we liberate ourselves, because it's definitely not the ultimate goal. Uh to continue to live under colonialism. So with that being said, let me finish this paragraph. It's authoritative power, the degree to which participants willingly comply to the commands and recommendations. Of its legitimate institutions and authorities. And its diffuse power, that is, to the degree to which participants spontaneously, consciously and unconsciously, individually. And of their own free will, engage in similar social practices that embody embody power relations but are not explicitly commanded. Based on an understanding that these practices are natural or moral or result from self-evident common interests. It should be noted that it is the fused power generated spontaneously based on commonly held attitudes, values and modes of behavior. Which facilitates the conspiring of one group against another. Without their conspiracy being deliberately planned and executed by any one person, group or groups within them, within them. At times cultures, societies and various types, various types of social organizations may be conceived of as conspiracies. As the means whereby persons cooperate towards an end. Whether good or evil, their effects on their own and other groups being more determined. By the very compelling logic of their shared beliefs and practices than by the machinations of some apparent or secretive group. Within them consciously pursuing some particular goal. So I know that was a long paragraph, there was a lot in it. This is another. Uh I mean, it was uh a lot to unpack there. Um. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but I think I do wanna come back in the next uh podcast I do, just for the sake of time. Um but the one thing I do wanna point out is this uh diffuse power. Spend a little time on this, because this is important. He he he's talking about um individuals or groups. That are not necessarily uh organized, like the system that we're under. We're not even organized, the ruling class is able to uh um keep colonialism, sustain colonialism. Because of the uh shared ideas and beliefs of even those people who are being oppressed, people who are being colonized. Or people who uh may uh represent, or colonizes themselves, you know what I'm saying, who buy into the system, right? Um where you may have a highly organized group, but everybody doesn't have to be organized once the system is in place. But that's why systems can function, you know, uh um without necessarily having, uh people having to like. Force you to act and behave in a particular way. That's why systems are so uh uh effective and so efficient, right? Uh so people operate uh in the interest of the system without them even consciously knowing it. This is what he's talking about right here with the the fuse power. So whether conscious or 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 unconscious, I'll read this again, the fuse power. That is to the degree to which participants spontaneously, consciously and unconsciously, individually and of their own free will. Engage in similar social practices that embody power relations but are not explicitly commanded, that are not explicitly commanded, right? Who's to, who who has to tell you to go, who's telling you to get up and get, go get a job and work a nine to five? Right? Or to, you know, go to, go to uh school, get a college degree or get, like, everybody's getting up and trying to survive under the system. And, you know, some of us who who are conscious waking up, you know, we do it with intentions of dismantling the system. But people are just like, walk, what we call dumb, deaf and blind like zombies, right? And they moving like clockwork. They don't have to be told, they've already brought into the system, but this has a lot to do with indoctrination as well. Centuries of indoctrination, uh uh where, you know, there's no longer uh this force that needs to be used. Dr. Cartagie Wilson talks about the miseducation of the Negro, where uh uh he makes the the uh the statement, like if there's um. Uh a back, if you're trained to go through the black back door, or you're forced to go through the back door, you've been forced to go through the back door so much. And you keep getting, being forced to go through the back door. One day you get up, you know, you don't even have to be forced to go through the back door, you automatically go through it. Now, it can happen through indoctrination too, but think about um what happened to and and roots, right? Uh I think the example of Toby who was getting whipped, what's your name, what's your name, right? Uh uh um Kuta Kente, and he finally caved in and said Toby. But the thing about the, uh it's not the best example, because the thing about um Kuta Kente though. He still wanted to go back to Africa, like in his heart, he knew that he was African. But he was, he was so beaten and defeated, because remember, he tried to escape, at least he was trying to escape. I think he, his foot got chopped off, it's been a long time, I hope I'm mixing characters up, but they had to chop his foot off, man, cause he was trying to escape. And then it got to the point where he was just like, you know what? Yeah, you know, I can't do it, I can't, I can't fight no more, right? And that is, that has become the African under uh eh this colonial system, wherever you are. Where you have a lot of people, it's just like, I can't fight, you know, I don't wanna fight anymore, we've been beat down, we can't, I've had conversations recently with people. Who are just like, it's better to integrate into this system, because there's no way you're gonna be able to dismantle capitalism, colonialism. Um yeah, somebody put mental slavery, let me, alright, so. But I definitely wanna go back to this diffuse power, there's a lot more I wanted to say on it, but I just don't have the time, my peoples. Uh let me go through here, though, I wanna appreciate everybody for joining and. Huru to my comrades. Yeah, another pop-up session, I'm trying to be consistent, man, I'm trying to. Uh tomorrow I won't be able to do a um uh a study, because I'll be traveling. But Friday, possibly Friday, uh the same time, I'll be able to do another one. And and uh so just like, make sure that you subscribe to the channel, make sure you follow um. Uh like and share as well, so we can get other people involved in these discussions. Uh this is the Blueprint for Black Power, if you haven't, purchase the book, make sure you purchase the book, Blueprint for the Book, Blueprint for Black Power by Dr. Emerson Wilson. I am taking uh uh creating PDFs of the document. Uh once I get through the whole document, um cause I'm taking, um I'm creating PDFs with the chapters as I go along. Uh once I get to the end, I'll have a whole PDF of this book right here, so um. But I encourage people to, like this type of book, I encourage our people to pay for it, because um. You know, Saba, who's the editor of this book, he's somebody um that's still around. Um and someone who's still trying to carry on or still carrying on the work the best of his ability at his older age. So, you know, African World Info Systems, the publishing group. Uh and these good uh Sababu Plata, he's the um author, and they still have meetings, him and some other brothers, sisters. Um have meetings weekly and discussions. But uh again, yeah, appreciate y'all uh being here, um joining this discussion and um. Yeah, see y'all Friday, see y'all Friday, man. So peace, a huru, till next time.